Okay, good evening. I'm Janet Anderson. I call to order the Town of Lewisboro Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, June 17, 2025, at 7:30 PM. The exit is the way you came in. These exits to my left are for emergencies only. In order to comply with the open meetings law, we must meet in person. We do not have the capacity for the public to attend by Zoom, nor can we stream our meeting to YouTube, but we will post an audio recording of this meeting to the town website. Materials considered at this meeting are available in the agenda packet that's posted for this meeting, and members of the public can always express their views by mail or email to planning@lewissborony.gov. Kirsten Conrad, our Planning Board Administrator, has confirmed that the meeting has been duly noticed. Legal requirement, legal notice requirements have been fulfilled. Joining me tonight from the Town of Lewisboro are members of the Planning Board, Paul Fusco, Charlene N. Delacato, Bruce Thompson. I believe John Guzmanow is coming, but he might be a little delayed. But in any case, we have a quorum, and thus we can conduct the business of the board, and we can consider any matters that come before us. Also here is Jan Johannesen from KSCJ Consulting, Council Judd Seibert, Planning Board Administrator Kirsten Conrad, Building Inspector Kevin Kelly, and I don't believe anyone from the CAC is here tonight. So with that, let's get started. First item on the agenda is a decision on calendar number 09-24 PB, calendar number 19-24 WP, calendar number 12-24 SW. This is the Villas at Vista, 920 Oak Ridge Commons, South Salem, New York. It's an application for the phase construction of 12 housing units in building 9A B. And the units, this is a request to build the units in phases.
Good evening. How are you?
Well, how are you?
Just fine, thanks. Bobby Ebert here, Cross River Architects, for Phil Pine at Oak Ridge Common. I think we're just here for a resolution, if I'm not correct. You can go ahead.
Right. So I would say that we, we considered this matter at the meeting last month in May, and we directed the consultants to prepare a resolution. So with that, perhaps Jan could go through it.
This is amended approval for the Villas at Vista, which was approved by the Planning Board on October 15, 2024, in a single phase. The offense requested to develop the property in three separate phases, which is allowable by code. The phasing, the project consists of 12 units. They're proposing to go those in three phases, five apartments in phase one, four apartments in phase two, and three apartments in phase three. They provide a phasing plan, a separate, a separate plan per phase, and they've demonstrated suitable fire access, pedestrian access, and parking for each phase as it's developed. We, they've answered all of our questions. It's a type 2 action under SECRE, so it's, it's basically a resolution that's approving the phases as proposed, and it's approved basically as submitted. There's, they've indicated in writing that there will be sprinklers, the sprinklers will be activated per phase, and that they'll have fire and pedestrian access available per phase. So it's pretty, pretty straightforward.
Thank you. So for the record, I think one of the things that was on the plans and is also in the resolution, the affordable housing units are
Phase two.
Are going to be in phase two. Also, as we considered the resolution, I asked Jan about whether there was a end date, whether we needed to put some kind of timing in this, and he reminded me, and just for everybody to know, that there, there is a, basically an end date on the, on the site plan. So that if, if there's, so we don't, and we, not that we expect any, you know, deferral or dawdling here, but, but just, we do have that if there should be.
And that clock started with the original approval on October 15. This doesn't start in a class. All the conditions that were contained in the original approval continue without any changes other than the phasing. So the timeframes that were indicated in the original approval will continue to apply.
So, I mean, because I think we had discussed that. Does anybody have any other questions on this or at this point? Nope. Okay. I'd look for a motion to approve the resolution as circulated to the board and described by Jan.
Some more.
Okay. And the second from Bruce. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect.
Thanks again.
Okay. The motion, the motion
See you one more time.
Okay. Yeah. There it is. The next item on the agenda is an extension of time request for calendar number 91-19WP, calendar number 10-19SW. This is for the Kenny residence at 40 Old Pond Road in South Salem, and a request for an extension of time to the resolutions originally granted in November of 2020, and then again in 2020, December of 2023. The current expiration dates are May 19, 2025. I don't believe anyone for the applicant is here. I, I know that Mr. Kenny only purchased this about a year ago in April of 2024, but this thing has been kind of an eyesore for the neighbors in the community before they brought the, and got the original approval back in 2020. I would kind of like to give a fairly, continue the extension because we certainly don't want him to have to start all over on the application process, but I'd sort of like to hear what's going on. So I was thinking maybe a six-month extension that would kind of give them a, you know, enough time to do some stuff, but we could hear and ask that they do appear at the next meeting so that we can hear what's going on.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's a good idea.
You know, we could do a year. Typically, we do two years, but it's in our purview to do anything we want with an extension. So you okay with six months, or?
Yeah, I wasn't here for the original approval, so I'm not sure of the project.
Could, could we possibly wait till they appear and then decide how long an extension to give them?
We could defer
You could do that as well.
Yeah, we could defer the matter till next month.
Yeah. It's almost better to say you have to be here.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, because then if they need more than six months, they can
Yeah, right.
Tell us and versus coming back.
I mean, that, his, his memo said he needs financing, so it could be a while, but I really almost would like to know if there's something that could be done about the, it's really a very dilapidated building, and a pretty, water just gushes down that driveway as it currently has, right into the lake. So I don't know if there's something that could be done. So, all right. So we, do we need a motion to defer it until next?
No, I think you can, by consensus, direct Kirsten to ask the, or to direct the applicant that he needs to be here.
Okay.
So that we can entertain this application.
Okay. So on this matter, it's the consensus of the board that we will defer the matter until next month, which will be on July 15, and to ask the, the applicant to come in and, so we can express our, hear what's happening, but also express our enthusiasm for some forward movement. Okay. The next item on the agenda is site development plan approval. This is calendar number 06-23PB, calendar number 18-24WP, calendar number 11-24SW, WH Farms Riding Academy on 20 Boutonville Road South in Cross River, New York, and it's a request for a reapproval of a site development plan with some, with some changes.
Oh, hey, you can't wait. Oh, sorry. [laughter] Female and woman Charles want to battle for the applicant with Rich Williams, and it's one of these times I get to turn it right over to Rich and he'll tell you everything that we're talking about.
Okay.
So as you mentioned, we're here before you tonight for a reapproval of the site plan. We worked with this board for some time to get a site plan, stormwater permit, and wetland permit for WH Farm. The approval elapsed, in part due to some personal reasons that the owner was going through, but she is now back committed to see and relocating to the farm as her northern training facility. And in, in looking at the last site development plan, she's seeking to make some changes, changes that are probably less invasive to the property with respect to overall disturbance. It does result in a slight increase in buffer disturbance, and I'll walk you through that in a minute. And also right now, as we've prevented it, presented it, it results in a change in phasing. But that is something we're actually talking to with the owner, and I'll walk you through that as well. If you remember, we have two entrances of Boutonville Road. We obviously, we had a site walk previously. We have the existing barn complex here. There's an existing sand riding ring. And what you're looking at on this rendering is a current area with what's proposed in color and what was previously discussed with this board in red. I thought it'd be helpful to have kind of a comparative illustration, just so we can walk through how we're seeing the farm re-envisioned. If you remember, we previously had a grand pre field here. Below that, between Boutonville Road, this red rectangle here was the carriage house, which is going to be staff quarters. That is previously in phase two. One of the things is we resubmitted the application, we did contemplate, are contemplating this in phase one. We're not fixed on that right now. We haven't discussed it with the town planner. We understand there's going to be a lot of questions about architecture and things. This is certainly not one of the owner's top priorities at the moment, and we couldn't get ahold of her just before this meeting because she's traveling, but I envisioned that that will likely fall back into phase two next time we're before you.
That was the cottage, or the maintenance?
That was the carriage house. Same story with the maintenance building, though. The owner's main goal right now is to get clarity on the sand ring. So we had a grand pre field here, and we were going to construct a new sand ring on this portion of the property and abandon the existing sand ring that's here. The owner's in need of a sand ring so bad, she'd rather not go through the process of constructing a whole new ring here, but just expanding the existing sand ring that we have.
Okay.
So that's why we're going to now have that here. Previously, that was going to be reconverted to paddock space. Other than that, the plan stays essentially the same. In phase two, we are envisioning reconstructing the barn again. We have no idea what that plan looks like at the moment, however, that will stay in this footprint. We're going to respect the trees that we discussed last time here. Comparing the old plan and the new plan, we do have about 7,000 more square feet of buffer disturbance, but we're removing six less trees. And where that extra buffer disturbance comes in, it's, it's right in here. It has to do with the expansion of the sand ring this way, and in part, we're holding this line, but the grading associated with pushing down the hill results in increased disturbance right around the fringe of the existing sand ring. This area that all exists is manicured lawn now. Part of the reason we chose to expand that way, and we have to go this way is because we don't want to cut more into the hill. There's also an existing septic system here, so we do have to push that way, but we did so in looking at how to extend the sand ring, but not make it look like a graded fill pad. So we went with a little gentler slope. That's why the grading's pushing out a little bit, so it's got a little bit more of a natural rolling feel as opposed to, you know, an engineered, exactly.
So you, you went to the, let me get that, that's to the east rather than going further to the west?
Nope, we're going to the west.
You're going to the west as well?
Yeah. We tried not to push too far this way because, again, this side of the ring is in the buffer.
Yeah. That's why I was, couldn't, didn't know if you could go more to the other, other end, but you
It can, but it pushes the fill out there.
Okay.
So we're trying, and we're trying to strike that balance between not going too far towards the wetlands. All of the wetland mitigation that we previously talked about, we still have. We're going to have to increase it because we have that additional disturbance, so that's taken into account. And then all of the driveway improvements that we previously talked about are still going to be installed. We do have an active driveway permit. We're talking to Kirsten, our wetland and our stormwater permits are still valid, but we really don't need to be amended just to reflect the current plan.
Are you, you're not changing, or are you changing the driveway at all?
It's the same driveway you saw previously.
Okay.
Other than the widensings that we've previously talked about,
Right.
Which we'll be doing with Brass Creek, Gravel Bay, some type of previous material.
Yes, so it's
Swell improvements.
Yes, Bruce.
So by doing what you've just explained, what is your cut and fill? Are you bringing in fill in order to extend that?
Yes. We will need to bring in some, well, site-wide, we're generally balanced. We're going to need to bring in fill here because you're correct, we're pushing out, but we still are constructing a grand pre field in this upper portion of the property.
In this phase, phase one?
In phase one.
Okay.
So that's going to allow us to generate some fill to move over to here.
Okay, so it's on-site?
Yeah, so we're trying to keep everything on-site. Some, maybe some other things.
Correct. And then the other is, in terms of your runoff now, are you, I'm trying to visualize it, or in my head, it's a mathematical, are you going to wind up with greater runoff going towards the wetland, or the same, or less?
We're not changing the drainage patterns, so we're envisioning it to be very similar to what's there now, with the exception of, we know there's a lot of water that moves through this hill below the ground.
Right.
And we are going to be putting under drains in to make sure that the grand pre field is safe and usable for the horses. We are going to be directing those under drains into the wetlands. That was one of the things that we'd worked out with, with Jan's office. So that may add some base water to help support the wetland.
But isn't there a diversion of water from the driveway with that swell? So we're trying to balance that out with producing some clean groundwater into the wetland because they're, they have a cutoff swell on the side of the driveway. So we felt that there could be less water going into the wetland in the proposed condition than existing, so we asked them to bring in some groundwater to supplement that.
Gotcha. Okay. So now on the grand pre field, and things have been changing a lot, and so I'm not, I forget if, is this a level one, or is this going to be a, a rolling one?
It's, it's not rolling. It is sloped, but it is, it's, it's about the same pitch as the last one. So across that grand pre field, we have almost 10 feet of grade change. So it's going to have about the same pitch, and again, that's because we're on a hill, and we're trying to not generate
I was just trying to, between level versus a, a slope.
Yeah, it'll be sloped. And then the other change maybe to mention is, you can see we slid carriage house further from Boutonville Road. We previously had an irrigation pond here that was going to be constructed in this phase, and then we were going to ferry large underground storage tanks for the irrigation system. We thought it made more sense, especially if we're considering doing this in phase one, to build the irrigation pond down by the maintenance building where it's going to be close to the irrigation controls. So the way the irrigation system works and will work, there is a well in front of the maintenance barns, about 50, 60 gallon a minute well, so it's a high-yielding well.
Yeah.
But because we have to treat stormwater, rather than use a well, use all the pumps, we want to catch our, catch the water and actually supplement it with an irrigation pond. So we're going to use that for stormwater retention, and then we'll feed that water back over to the sand ring.
Yeah. So one of the concerns I had, I, I don't know, I just, so you've now got an irrigation pond that, and when you talk about, when the notes on the, on the plan talk about a cistern, is that the, that's the holding tank, or is that the, okay.
Yep, so there'll be another thing here because what'll happen is, this will be what feeds the system, and it's got to draw from, it's got to receive its water from somewhere. The primary place that we'll receive its water from will be the irrigation pond. The secondary source, if the irrigation pond doesn't have water to use or water available, will be from the well.
Right.
And we got to make sure that we have enough time to fill that tank before the demand. And that's because these sand rings during the summer, they're going to be there in order to keep the footing down and secure.
That's done by gravity, right, from the pond to the tanks?
Yes, I think, I just have to go check in, which way, I think we're going to do that by gravity.
So, but the whole, the whole area being sloped down, so the irrigation pond could fill from the slope, and I'm, I'm sort of, I'm, can you explain how having the cottage there is going to work? Because there also has to be septic fields or some, for the, for the cottage somewhere, right?
We previously contemplated all the septics moving to this portion of the site where we found better soil conditions.
Ah, okay.
All right. There are some drier soils here, which, again, these are things that we're talking to the owner about possibly, and why we need to slide this in phase two. She doesn't have her architecture figured out. She doesn't really know. Does she want to do this? Does she want to do both? You know, us, she's, she's making all the decisions right now.
As, as Rich pointed out, the focus now is on the equestrian-related facilities, the grand pre field, the sand ring. I think that when we have a chance to fully discuss it, including some of the questions that Jan raised in his memo, since that was the order, these will probably, the buildings that we're talking about, they'll probably slide to this phase two. That's what we think is going to happen.
And just, we did decide ultimately to go pumping here. We went back and forth on gravity or not because we're going to have a tank, and we wanted a flood control
Okay.
To be able, to be able to call for water based on the demand here.
And the
So it's not, I'm just sorry, I missed that. Not gravity fed?
Irrigation pond is not going to be gravity fed
Okay.
To the tank.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Jan, turn it off.
I think it'll, it'll just be important to know if the cottage, carriage house, and the septic for that end up in phase two, just the routing of the, whether it's going to be forced main or what have you from one to the other, where that's going to be.
Yeah, because I, and where the well is. So are you going to use the same well for the irrigation as you're going to use to, for those?
No, there's, there's another well higher on-site. This, this one well would feed these two structures, because it was just the two, there's two or three bedrooms, so they're not going to have a high water demand.
Okay. So it would be, so that well down there would be for irrigation plus the, those two structures? Okay. And when, when there are apartments in the maintenance building and the carriage house, and they rebuild the barn, are there also going to be apartments in the barn?
The, the idea for this barn?
Yeah. I mean, when it's going to be redone, it, my understanding is it currently has apartments in it.
It has. Is that the three-bedroom apartment, correct?
Right. So that, once you rebuild it, are the, there going to be apartments in that, an apartment in that barn too, or is it going to, is the housing going to be just in the maintenance and the carriage? Or maybe you don't know this yet. This might not be fair.
We're, we're in the same place we were last time when we were talking about some of these things. The owner doesn't know. She hasn't figured this out yet.
Mm-hmm.
You know, she's looking at potentially, you know, making her own attach to it.
Okay.
And again, she really hasn't decided, does she do want it both? Which is why we're probably sliding all that to phase two.
The maintenance barn now doesn't have the proper setback, has 50 rather than 100, and putting apartments above it would even change the use.
Okay.
So how many apartments do you need, or shall we not discuss it?
Till later.
Till later.
Yeah, I, I know this is tough.
The, no, it's not. The, the thought process we had was there was going to be two, maybe three tops here, and two or three here.
Is that building getting poorer?
It's going to stay a two-story, but you're going to develop the architecture.
Because if it's, if it's in a zoning setback, is it in a zoning setback?
I don't know.
Yeah, I want to verify that.
If it is in a zoning setback and the height is increasing, that is exacerbating it.
Yes, it is.
The zoning setback, you'll need to bear in mind.
That would be most likely, because you'd say, I'm not so sure, because that increasingly breed, could that non-conforming, I'm not sure.
Well
Okay, well, something we'll have to look at.
Yeah, as a non-conformity, it was maintenance, now it's changed use to
It, it is likely all of this is moving to phase two.
No, I, I understand that. Let's see if we can discuss
We apologize, we don't have those answers. As I said, it was a personal issue that basically deferred everything. There was even at one point a contemplation, it was going to be sold, but it's not. You probably heard that it was on the market. He took it off the market, and they're going to make this their home as well. So if, we're going to go in the right direction, we just don't have a lot of clarity right now on those details.
Yeah, so if, if it's in phase one, I guess it'll go faster to when she can get whatever she wants to be done.
Well, I think sliding into phase two would let us get the improvements that we really need now, which are the equestrian
Yeah, if she
Yeah, exactly.
If that's the focus.
Yeah, that's exactly, otherwise, there's too many equestrians.
I think it's a lot faster.
You're exactly correct.
Yeah, and the architecture and
Right.
You're exactly correct.
There's going to be main, main residents here for the owner?
Well, we, I think that we were talking that more than likely on a pound ridge property, I think. And again, this, that's a very fluid one, okay? The barn reconstruction, that's something we always contemplate and whatnot, so we're just talking
There's no, there's no main residence proposed?
No, not right now, no, absolutely not. No. No.
Okay, so
I just had a question on the irrigation pond.
Yes.
For going back into that. Do you, I was looking at the details, so you're, this is going to be consistent with a few feet of water, and then there's a flux of 18 inches you're proposing right now?
Yeah, and so, just so that we can let things settle at the bottom and get the settlements down.
Is there, was there ever a thought of bringing it to the base of the grand pre ring so you can get all your footing drains and all your drainage into that first, making sure you always have water, and then gravity feed overflows to the wetlands after that?
The, no, inasmuch as the footing drains from here, we kind of consider it as off-limits based on our past discussions, right? That they, they want it to be directed towards the wetland. There's, this driveway right now has a, has a swivel that fails often along the side of it.
The water's kind of coming in.
It takes this water down, and then if you guys remember the site walk on the way to this maintenance building, that culvert itself is just completely fogged with gravel and washout. So we are going to be firming that up and stabilizing it, making it function as it was supposed to, catching it as part of our driveway permit with the town, properly bringing it into the collection system so it doesn't fail on the driveway and run down the road. As part of that, as Jan mentioned, making sure that we keep this wetland fed, the intent was to take any of the under drains from up here and bring them straight into the wetland. So because of that, I did see that as an opportunity to feed it, or feed the irrigation pond. Part of the reason why we split it in this location, the owner's experience with irrigation ponds is the maintenance crews have to have them front and center in front of their face to make sure that they are all functioning, they're working, to make sure that they're not going stagnant, right? A lot of times they'll put irrigators in them as needed just to keep the water moving. She wanted it next to the maintenance building for that purpose. The other thing is, we thought it was nice and early to pull the carriage house back in the next phase, so we kind of thought that could be a nice buffer if we, again, we made the slopes more gentle than we normally would. We want to kind of let that go as a natural meadow to kind of keep, when you're standing down looking up, that paddock kind of feeling.
Yeah, so I, I honestly don't know, if you make an irrigation pond, does that create a wetland, that then we have another 150-foot buffer around?
I hope not.
[laughter]
I was about to say.
So I, I have been a part of many projects where we come in 10 years, 15 years later, and some of our stormwater basins are designated wetlands.
Right.
That's a hard enough one for us to fight. To start designating stormwater practices as wetlands on day zero is a practice that I have not run into, and
Right, right. No, well, this isn't, remember, this isn't a stormwater, you're not selling it as a stormwater practice, you're selling it as
Well, absolutely, we are. This is a recognized near state de-eseering infrastructure practice.
Okay. Then, because calling it an irrigation pond is what triggered my question.
I think it's, it's serving two purposes.
Okay. That's a wonderful answer.
Just to go back, I'm, I understand the notes you were saying about the flows. I think, I mean, it sounds like you've reviewed it a little bit, or probably a lot. There's part of me that still thinks that maybe taking just a quick glance There's part of me that still thinks that maybe taking just a quick glance on it, and the board can discuss, because it also would reduce a lot of disturbance. You'd be sloping, you know, you'd have two downhill slopes now combined into one off that Grand Prix. You could still push the carriage house back, there's no reason it couldn't be where it is in that case. And then my experience with irrigation ponds and seeing it or cisterns as they dry up in the summer, and just to make sure, you know, now you're getting significantly more water, you have an overflow that goes into the wetlands. We're talking about groundwater, so it's not like the, this is coming off of a lot of, I mean, right now it has a couple roof leaders going into it, I think from the, from the proposed carriage house, that's it?
Yeah, if, if the carriage, if the carriage house is built in phase one, we need a stormwater practice. If we move it to phase two, we actually don't.
Yeah.
Right, because we don't have new impervious surfaces. But the idea was, we need the water, and rather than just pull it off the aquifer, since we're going to need it anyway for whatever we do up here. And whether or not, we can take a look at sliding it here as an alternative to here, and see what it means, but we needed something down here and again. The more horse, horse farms I work on, the more I learn how important water management is, especially when you're dealing with high-level, high-level riding and the footing. They spend more time taking care of that footing than I had any idea was much.
Yeah, I'm just thinking this may be a way to have more water consistently in it. That's, just about.
Is it wooded between the toe of the irrigation pond and the street? Can't, looking at the area?
No, we stayed, we stayed out of that wood mine on purpose.
Okay, so there is a wooded buffer?
Yeah.
Okay, so ready tree removal? I don't know if you picked up those trees with your survey, because that area wasn't really being disturbed, but is there...
We're keeping everything behind the fence line.
Behind the fence line, so it's all in the existing paddock?
Yeah.
And you had mentioned there were six fewer trees removed, or where were those that are not removed now?
Generally...
Oh, where the old irrigation pond was, too?
Um, where the old irrigation pond was, and also, we had significantly more disturbance associated with the grading, because the previous Grand Prix field, the top, the, the top of slope was here, and the sand ring was all the way over here.
Oh, good.
So this whole hill, and basically, we were grading down to the same level that we are now, we essentially kept the same LOD there. We're just, we're reducing all the disturbance in here.
Okay.
So I don't know that there's much we can do except, say, come back with what, with what you think you really want, right?
Yeah, I think what you're saying is exactly the same way we think. We've got to speak with the owner, we have to define what's going to be in phase one. If she really needs the equestrian facilities to be acted on quickly, then we'll have to shove things back into phase two. We want to have that discussion with her. Also, Jan raised some issues, but like, as you pointed out about architectural things and whatnot, details, those, I think if we're going to have to wait on that, then I think that we have to push the equestrian facilities off, we don't want to do that. So we'll speak to her, and we'll find out, we'll define what we really need, and bring that revision back to you.
Okay.
I think that's a way to make it.
And I think the only one, other thing that I had on my list was, and it's in Jan's memo as well, is just please confirm that either the business plan is as it was before, or give us a, give us an amended one.
I know that there'll be a personnel change in the business plan, beyond that probably very little, but we will confirm that.
Okay, great. Sorry, go ahead, Richard.
And the other thing, one of the initial things we talked about is, is it, as an equestrian facility, somebody's living here 24/7?
Yes. As a matter of fact, we submitted a fire safety plan to the building inspector that we developed with Fire Protection Services and whatnot. There's a, as we mentioned, there's a three-bedroom, not cottage, but apartment that's part of the existing barn. I actually inspected it recently, and that's where we're going to have at least three rooms been 24/7. While the horses are there, obviously.
And we did get a letter from the building inspector, Kevin, today, thank you, that said that the, he had reviewed the whole fire plan, and it's satisfactory. So that's, it came today, so I don't know if I got, if people got a chance to see it, but...
And that had a review of the operational status of the equipment, evacuation plans for the horses, everything was done.
Okay, so, um...
Just one more question.
Oh, sure.
The, the well that's down by the maintenance barn, the intent is to have that well serve as irrigation, but also for the water for the apartments?
For, the structure is on this portion of the property, and then there's another well up in this portion of the property that would service the barn.
Okay. No issue with that, the irrigation and purple waters?
There, the fear I was, I was afraid of running into was, the regs changed, so if you have a second well on the property, there's a longer testing process. But that's if you're drilling a new irrigation where both of these must exist.
Right.
So I'm not just making this.
Okay.
Okay, so, and, so, yes, so I think we've got a path, I mean, and could you remind us when the submission date is for the next meeting?
It is June 24.
So we have our work at office.
Yes, so, yes, so one week, all right, so, yeah, so, that's...
You didn't say that, right? You did not say that.
So that's why I wanted to ask what the submission date was. So, um, you know, I do think your, your insight is accurate, in that if you want to move quickly, it's better to focus on the equestrian and some of these other questions we will want to know about. Okay.
Good.
One maybe procedural question, just looking down the road a little bit.
Yep.
The site, the site development application, that public hearing can be waived. Wetland permit, right, we, we currently have one, that we're amending, and I don't know if that can be done administratively, and then we can see if a way of a public hearing for the site development.
Yeah, I think whether or not we, the, I, I think the board has to decide whether or not they want to waive a public hearing, and I think the question might again be how complex this is, as opposed to how...
Completely understood.
That's very fair.
Am I saying it adequately softly?
You're the chairman, you can say just about anything you want.
Okay, yeah, um, so, so I think that, um, we would talk about that when, when the time came, and I think that the, you do have a stormwater permit that's still valid, right? So we've got, we've got some time on that. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
See you next month.
Great. Go for it. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a wetland permit review. This is calendar number 08-25, the Freiburg residence at One Town Mill River Road, South Salem, New York, which is an application for pond restoration.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Gene Nizaro, Nizaro Inc., here representing the applicant, and we were here a month or so ago, regarding the concern was primarily was the spoil area where the material going to go with the flood. I was asked to apply for a stormwater management permit, which is submitted to Kevin, and we have in here, going back to the FEMA map, I believe you all have that information, but this is the mapping of the FEMA floodplain here. As you can see, the house is actually located within that already. Also, on the site, this here, this blue line represents the FEMA line. The, it cuts through the residence, as well as the swimming pool and patio already in that area. We've got the, I don't know if you can all see this or not?
You can show it to the board, I'll...
Okay. The spoil areas that go in the former tennis court area, which is now, basically hasn't been used in years, is grassed over. And the concern was, are we going to be impacting the storage area of the floodplain? With that being said, we've pulled everything back as much as we can manipulate, and to place the material that's still in the tennis court area. It's about 900 yards to come out of here. The way I look at this is, if you grade this the best you can, you've got to have a six-foot fill for most, on top of the tennis court area, and this is a 528 line coming around, 530, minimal fill in here. The way I look at this is, if the area will accept it, that's fine, grade it where we can. Any surplus has to come offsite. I don't see any other way of doing it. It's, there is no other source.
So the, your spoils area is entirely within, even though you pushed it up the hill a little bit, still in the floodplain?
Yes, it is.
So if you're taking 900 yards out of the pond, then...
Yes, right here, here's your floodplain line, here's the tennis court area. So, you know, to me, it's already been, it's been impacted already when you built the tennis court, basically it's a cut fill. You have a fairly sizable cut, about six foot from the embankment where this little shed is, dropping down. I would propose that you put the fill in here, grade it the best you can within the parameters of the tennis court, the downhill slope, pull that back up to the original grade, reslope that, and if there's surplus, that needs to come offsite. I just don't see any other way.
It didn't make sense.
So do they have to, I'm sorry, Jan, do they have to balance, because they're in the hundred year?
They can't show, they have, they have to demonstrate that there's the same amount of iron in the floodplain.
But the pond self-fills, so you can't...
I think if you're removing 900 yards from the floodplain here, and you're putting it there, to me, it's a balance. I think you just got to demonstrate that, that there's no additional fill coming in in your...
Beyond the...
Yeah.
Plus it's, you're taking it from the area where the concentrate flow is.
Right, yeah.
So you're, you're moving it up slope.
So I think it's, so long as you're balanced, you're okay, is the way I feel.
Increase the capacity of the pond, the storage area.
Right.
Because right now you've got about maybe two feet of water, foot and a half, going down max, six feet.
Unless there's some distinction between the flood, this is, this is Joe's comments, I'm speaking a little out of term, I'll clarify it tomorrow, but you're taking material out of the floodway, and you're putting it in the floodplain, so I have to just, maybe that's what you're speaking about, if there's, if this is...
Right.
Yeah, because I, I would assume we'll have to just get clarification, because you're, you're still below, let's call it, a high-water line, right? Because it, the, the pond's going to self-level itself again, so even if you take...
The spoil area is in the hundred-year floodplain.
Yeah, unless it floods.
The hundred-year flood will get up to the spoil area.
It'll get up there.
You're not supposed to, you're supposed to balance that.
Right, so you're, that's what I'm saying, so that would, right now we would be, you wouldn't be able to do that, because it's in the hundred-year flood where he's proposing it.
Yeah, I just have to see if, if the, it's taking out of the floodway and putting it in the floodplain, so I have to just check.
It's a unique situation, it just...
I mean, the, the answer would be, I mean, there's an answer, it would be remove it from the site, but then it's just, you know, obviously that's an expense to your client.
Absolutely.
So, let me just hop it over to Joe.
Sure, because I agree, going, going back to the tennis court, impacted that area years ago when you did that, so that's already changed the whole scope of it. The houses within it, the pools within it, and the patio, which is, it's already been impacted.
Right.
And it's a long area now.
Yeah, we just don't want to further impact it, that's all.
I agree, I just don't really know how to address that.
Yeah. The three of us can get on the horn with Joe tomorrow.
That'd be fine, tomorrow doesn't work for me. Knee surgery in the morning.
Oh, okay.
Anytime after that.
But I do, so a couple of things come to mind, I mean, and one of this is Paul sort of brought up, would a, would a real survey show something different than the kind of vague map that we got from, you know, mapping Westchester? And if it's actually going across the, into the house and pool area, I would think that maybe insurance would have asked for a floodplain survey on this already, I...
I would agree.
So maybe the applicant actually has a real...
I mean, I purchased the property after all this, this in place, the pool, the patio, and the tennis court area.
Yeah, but I, I'm just, I'm just thinking that...
How do you get fill insurance?
Yeah, so there's, there might be, in order to get insurance, you might, although this might be something that hasn't come up, and the insurance company doesn't know, so I don't know if we're making...
Well, that's possible.
Trouble here, but, but I, I'm just wondering, because we're going on this, you know, the floodplain coming from a map, not, and, and whether, before we start shipping stuff off site, if it comes to that, whether it would be worthwhile doing a real survey to have a better delineation?
I don't know that you're going to come up with any more specific information on the floodplain by doing a specific survey.
Okay.
It's an unstudied area, and you're going to end up with the flood, you're going to use the floodplain map from, from firm, which is what they're using, which is on County GIS.
Okay.
So I'm not sure that...
Doesn't really help.
That may, I mean, so long as, when you're looking at the plan, and we've evaluated it, that it, it's consistent with the existing conditions, it's representing what's out there, I think, I think it is.
Yeah. It seems to sort of follow the contour lines as best you can tell?
It's, it's, I'm trying to pull it back to match...
There's no tree removal.
There's no tree removal.
So it's just, you know, is it, is there sufficient information there to determine yes, you're taking material from one spot and putting it in another? I think that the county, they're not near any property lines, right? The county topo is, is not 100% accurate, but it's, it's telling the tale, in my opinion, of what's out there, based on what I've seen. It's not, it's not, it's not that off, you know, for an exercise like this.
I understand that, I was just hoping that maybe if it comes to having to take out fill, it might be cheaper to do a survey, and the survey...
You don't get that answer.
You don't think so? Okay, good.
No, no, so my experience with FEMA mapping, it's really a broad brush design.
And this area, is there a specific study, and you have an elevation, that's one thing, but this is not that area.
And again, going back to where everything's already located, the area's been impacted tremendously, I would say.
Okay.
We'll just have to balance the side and work that out.
And I think you also need a DEC permit, can you tell us how that's going?
Yes, we filed with the Freshwater, and I've got that, it was submitted, and I applied for DEC, because Jan said at the time, go ahead, it doesn't have to be...
Sequential.
Them first, and then to come to the board. So filed with them, have not heard anything from them, other than Freshwater responded saying, yes, it's a unique identification area, what they call it, so...
Okay. So I think we've got a plan here that, that you're going to talk with Jan and Joe and see if you can, what all this means.
Our comments were, eventually you'll need a, a DEC wetland permit. We're going to have them just recalculate the levels of disturbance, including the dredging area to see where you're at.
Which was under 10,000, or like 8100 square feet.
Perfect, and then if you're over 5,000, as we indicated, you need to submit the notice of intent and erosion set of patrol plan, which you've done.
Yeah, you had a question about the map.
And then it's the cut fill, and then where's the well?
The well is in the front of the house, I actually went out there, took a photograph of it, it's right here.
So that's the extent of the comments, and I think we can clear up the major one of the firm.
And then he had a comment about the construction access, which we're using the madding on that there.
I think that, then, what did he get, is a CAC comment, or a CAC?
No, I don't know, I discussed it with Joe.
Joe maybe overthought?
I used him, waiting for him to go.
My only other question is for kind of the wetlands radiation on it, I mean, there are relatively small amount of plants being put back in for the amount of disturbance, and we, from what it is showing, I think we talked a little bit last month about some no-mow areas around the pond.
Correct.
I don't, I could easily be missing it, I don't know.
Straight down here, in this area around here, and then doing some boulders for demarcation around that. As far as the disturbance, there is no other disturbance other than the access into the pond, there's no perimeter work around it, so the banks remain the same. So the banks remain the same. The biggest thing now is to plant that, stabilize some trees, grow through treble list here. And I also submitted a estimate from Gossip Brothers for that as well.
So your, your plan there is shown in the no mo zone?
Uh huh, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's sort of dotted lines.
Hard to follow, but I, yeah.
Yeah.
The, I believe the spoils area was going to be a no mo zone as well with the cremated seed mix, if I remember correctly.
It could be, if that's what the commission wants it to be, you know.
I'm not suggesting it. I thought it was on the landscape architects' plan.
It was just going to be seeded with a wetlands mix, have the areas around the fringe of that and then have it hydroseeded and it could be whatever variety.
The good news is, is part of that is over impervious surface, the tennis court, right?
Correct. It's a hard true core. It's not, it's all grass.
Oh, yeah. Stick it all in.
Totally. I mean, this was me playing a twenty years ago.
Yeah, is hard true considered impervious? I guess it has, hard true is that, I don't, on the.
It's like clay.
It's like the clay, so it would be impervious, I guess. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's grass grown through it now, but there's nothing to say that the owner couldn't restore that. It has a right with legal court and it could be impervious, so, yeah, there is some benefit to it.
Right. Okay. So I think we need that answer and a, and a sort of analysis, if you can get that and, and.
Yeah, I'll get together with you, if Thursday or Friday.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Maybe go, come up with a resolution to this. It's kind of, it's odd, like I said, taking the map and seeing how everything's been disturbed, already built this, how do you get a comment for that?
I'm sure it was predated.
Yeah, same.
Right, right. Okay, so.
So I'm just going to go back on the planting.
Yes.
The boulder demarcation, they make a note of fifty foot maximum apart. I mean, that's a, that's the length of this room.
Yeah.
So I just, maybe we can change that, get that closer, just so it never really does get mowed down and.
We have to import the rock anyway.
Yeah, just so it doesn't, we protect that edge of the pond. I think they would want it too.
Right.
And typically, we do a pond like this, we get down to the original bog, color good, and this is a riverbed, so it's hard bottomed. We're not in a peak bog or something that's endless. It's really primarily sandy material, gravelly material is washed in with some sediment, of course. Just right now, there's fragments, there's, it's a mess.
We can take a closer look at the, I passed over it myself, the no mo zone and the boulder demarcation and that planting area.
So they will come back? Are we going to bring this administratively? How does it feel?
Well, I think we could do either. I sort of want to hear what hap, what the resolution is on the, but I don't, also don't want to push you so that you can't get it done in this season, so, because I'm sure, so if we have you come back, can you get it, what, what, how long will this take? Once you get to, get the go ahead? Oh, you're waiting for the DEC permit anyway?
DEC permit anyway. And then, when we do it, we can fit into our schedule. We're busy and we're just looking at the job schedule and make it happen. And I want you to do a little flow system for sure. It's dry as period as possible, but hey, it's going to be never concern.
Probably going to end up being dictated by the DEC.
Yeah, by the DEC.
When you get that permit.
Exactly.
Okay. So I think by having him come back, it's not, it's not going to probably slow you down. I'd be surprised if you get the DEC permit and I'm.
Well, I think the thing to do would be, I don't really know if we, I'm not, I'm not opposed to coming back for another meeting, that's the point.
Right.
But once we get the DEC's opinion of this, we'll work this out with Jan and Joe, figure out the spoil area, recreating the pond's storage capacity. I think that's more important along with the DEC. I don't think another meeting's going to really change the tune of this.
Yeah, but I'd like to see the plans updated with the, with the tighter boulders and the, you know, and a little bit of decision.
The last few DEC wetland permits that have been involved with outside of the town, they're, they're taking a very close look at that same question with the floodplain balance.
Yeah.
I think some authority has been given to them on that particular issue. So we have to, we have to figure it out either way, you know?
Right.
So I'm sure we.
Right.
So I should, I would leave this, should I just wait till we have our meeting and see how that goes?
Well, it sounds like the board wants you to come back in July. I don't think that's going to slow you down. And we, either this week or next week, we'll need to figure out the balance.
That's fine.
I'm sorry, does it matter? Do you want to wait until DEC? Do you think you want DEC's comments before you see it or?
No.
No.
Yeah, I think we're, I think the plan's in ninety eight percent there, the DEC is probably going to be happy with it. It's just that they're going to have that same comment about the balance.
Would you like me to tighten up the plan with more boulders, demarcation of that? Just revise that plan?
I think.
Bring that to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Resubmit it?
And, and whatever we decide in our conversations, those few items.
We'll add that into it.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, so because you're saying that might be a conversation a couple of weeks out, can give them a little extra time on resubmission?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right.
So submission dates?
The twenty fourth, but.
The twenty fourth.
Are people getting knee surgeries?
Yes, we're, we're giving some.
A week before the meeting will be.
Yeah, a week before the meeting, so that would be the eighth of July.
It's, the meeting is.
July fifteenth.
Fifteenth, okay. And have the information to you.
July eighth.
You got it. Very good.
And good luck with your knee operation.
Yes.
Okay. I know that's tough.
Smooth one.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is calen, oh, thank you. Calendar number twelve dash twenty five WP, calendar number oh seven dash twenty five SW. This is the Harkum residence at twenty two Gilbert Street, South Salem, New York. An application for a driveway, detached garage, and ceramics studio.
Good evening, I'm Seth Tysters, defending agent Tysters Landscape Architects. I'm here with my colleague, Gwen Tysters, the homeowner, Janet Harkum, Matt Charanda from Vivgo Associates, and Craig Attinorelli from Proger Attinorelli Marketers. So Janet would like to renovate her existing house, install a detached garage, as well as a ceramics studio with a green roof. Unfortunately, the entire property, which is located adjacent to Truesdale Lake, is located within the one hundred fifty foot wetland setback, requiring us to ask for a wetland permit as well as a stormwater permit. The renovation to the house will occur almost entirely within the footprint of the existing house, with the exception of a small seventy eight square foot area. The proposed garage and studio are modest in size and conform to the allowable building coverage in our one quarter acre zone. The maximal, the maximum allowable building coverage is twenty five percent. We are just above fifteen percent for this project. The driveway will be redesigned to provide access to the garage and allow more room for maneuverability and parking. Boulder retaining will support the driveway and be interspersed with native plantings consisting of native shrubs, perennials, and grasses. We are also proposing mitigation planting down here in the southeastern portion of the property. As I mentioned before, the studio will contain a green roof and will not contribute to impervious surfaces on the property. I did receive the comments from Keller Sessions, and Jan, we're still trying to get to the bottom as to whether this is a regulated wetland.
Let me find out. Yeah. The reason why I bring it up is that, well, the board's aware that in January, the DEC changed their wetland regulations.
Right.
And it's kind of thrown a little bit of a monkey wrench into things. The DEC can basically, in our neck of the woods in Westchester County, can regulate just about any size wetland. So there's a process to go through to get a jurisdictional determination from the DEC. But the, those regs changed in January. The Truesdale Lake, I don't know if it's the, one of the associations has a consultant deal with the aquatic herbicides.
Right.
And that consultant, like, as soon as the regs went into effect, went through that JD process, and I saw a letter come back from the DEC saying, taking the lake as a wetland, which was like, oh my God, wow.
Right.
So that was just one letter. I would clarify, because I was just talking to another consultant today, and he says he has the same wetland, two different projects, submitted jurisdictional determinations, got two different letters back, one said it was regulated and the one said it didn't. So it's, it's, it's a mess, it really is, but it has to be clarified.
Yeah, we're looking into it.
You get an email from, you know.
Yeah, we checked out the EAF mapper first, it wasn't on that.
Yeah.
Yesterday, I reached out to Region Three.
Yeah, you have to go, you're familiar with the jurisdictional.
Yep, we submitted that yesterday as well.
Unfortunately, that's ninety days and they've been taking all of ninety days, really, my experience, but it's only, I have that letter from the, from the Truesdale Lake Association, so we have to follow up on that.
Right. So, and I ran a lake conference on Friday and Brian Drum from DEC Region Three came and explained what the rules are about wetlands. And basically, if you have weeds in the littoral zone, plants growing in the littoral zone, they are, it's considered, I have the presentations here somewhere, it's considered wetland if you have twelve point seven acres of that. And I'm, you know, the littoral zone around Truesdale, I'm pretty sure hits that limit. There's also, I know they don't have maps anymore that are, that are due, you know, are really authoritative, but they're informational. And on the informational maps, parts of this do show up as well, the.
Oh, interesting, so it's not the whole lake, it's, it's particular areas.
It's the, it's, I will send you his presentation. It was really, because I was asking, you know, what's navigable waters? And he did this wonderful presentation, they answered a lot of questions. It looks like this is not new to be considered, that the code has always said that if there's plants, if there are plants growing in the lake, it's a, wetland plants are, are a wetland. And, but that it was never covered by the maps before. And now they're saying, this is what the rules say. It was really, it was a really interesting presentation. I.
But that one's slowed down your process here, you know?
Right.
No.
Sure. Yeah, so we'll, we're just, it's just a waiting game at this point, it sounds like, until they get back to us.
This is sort of a little niche, but if you have an existing dock or something, make sure, I would say, show it so that we are approving it and so that there's not a question in the future, oh, there's no dock, right, on the plans? So what are the, first of all, I think this is one of the homes that's on the water system, so it doesn't have a well, no well, but you have your own, there is a little sewer system there. Okay, so do you, can you tell us how many square feet the additions are, the two buildings are?
The footprint of the building?
Yep.
The garage is around five hundred and sixty square feet and the studio is about five hundred and seventy.
Do they have a second floor?
The studio has a little mezzanine.
Okay.
In which you have a spiral stair that goes down. So it's a, it's like a, I won't even say it's half the footprint.
Yeah, so we're going to probably have to get a variance for accessory structure. Because that's six hundred.
For what?
So.
Oh, because it's like a floor to floor?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The six hundred, there's two different six hundred categories. There's the six hundred square feet ground floor footprint for wetlands triggered to the planning board, and the other six hundred square feet gross floor area for maximum size of accessory structure.
And I, it sounds like, because we are, there was a question about if we were doing anything to the original house within the side yard setback, we are raising the roof for second stories, so that requires going in front of.
Yeah, that was, if you can just clarify, I wasn't a hundred percent sure in looking at the plans, if there was an increase in height there, but.
Yes.
Sounds like, is there a full second floor?
Yes.
Going on? Okay. So on that side setback, you're increasing the height on the side of the non-performity, so that would be a variance.
Okay, so while we're, while we're discussing all this.
Historically, that's how it's been.
Right. While we're discussing all this, let's sort of say, I think, can we have a consensus of the board to refer this to the building inspector for zoning compliance and or need to go to the department health? Because I think you also will look and say.
How big the addition is altogether.
Yeah, the bedrooms, I don't know if that does anything. So we have, we have consensus that we are going to.
Yes, absolutely.
So you have a pretty extensive memo.
Yeah, there's, there's a handful of comments on the stormwater, which will get resolved. It's really the DEC getting an updated survey, some tree information, the zoning, potential zoning items. I think conceptually, everything made sense, you know?
Yeah.
Quite a nice layout. So it's just going through some of the details, I think, and understanding how things are being constructed and what, what triggers are for other agencies. Nothing, nothing jumped out at me as being really concerning.
Right.
It's just providing some details.
Yeah, I think that, that'll clarify whether or not we, you know, how much might need to go to the zoning board. So we're delivering this, yes?
Yeah, so I just wanted to mention also that we did have a positive letter from the conservation board with this, so I just want to go to record and mention that. So it's, that's good news for us, obviously. In terms of calculating the building, when we do the building coverage, you know, we're looking at the footprint of the building, if we have an overhang, because part of, we do have part of an overhang on a green roof, how big is it, plan? Oops, one hundred and.
How, 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 how still, how much is the overhang, two feet or less?
No, it's probably more than two feet.
Three feet.
It really, part of it really is to cover a one story kind of storage area for kayaks. So it really is a roof. And then part of it's like maybe you have three feet overhang.
But are you, are you concerned about building coverage? Sounded like you're good on building coverage.
No, we're good on building coverage, but it sounded like that.
That other.
From zoning.
The zoning item is an interior calculation, so it's gross floor area on the inside.
Measured inside walls?
Yeah.
Ah.
Well, the wall itself, the wall itself, but nothing to do with.
Right, that's the.
But that's why we're giving it to the building inspector to, to calculate that.
I have been, the owner has pulled permits before, I've worked with one on this property before. The driveway is very tricky as it stands today, so the fact that they're opening it up for motor court, you know, makes a lot of sense in straightening out that driveway, but it's precarious a little bit down.
Is there, is there any water or, I don't know, utilities of any sort in a little kitchen ad or anything in either one of these buildings?
There isn't water source in the studio.
In the studio?
Yeah.
Like a sink or?
Sink.
Okay. Just curious, so that will, that'll be handled not by a dry well or anything, and that goes into the septic?
Right.
Perfect, okay.
Yeah, the septic is good elevation. It's right basically next to the studio.
Right there.
There's no indication that it would be, those buildings would be considered bedrooms, in my view of things, but they'll have to get connected to the septic.
Right.
We will confirm that, do you agree?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, I just, I don't, I don't know if, and the reason I asked is because I just don't know if having water things in and outbuilding change anything, so, okay. Well, I think this looks like a really interesting, you know, set of additions and, and I know that there are constraints on the site, so I think it would just, just answer a few of the questions, we'll get a response from the building inspector. Do we need a new submission or just more the answers to questions? You did ask for a few things to go on.
I think there'll be resubmission of both architectural and site.
Okay. So we, our official date is next week, is that a?
No, we can be flexible.
We can be a little flexible, okay. So you get it from the authority about how flexible we are.
We can keep it that same, whatever that July.
Okay, July 8th, right.
I'll, I mean, I applaud you, I think the application proposed, the green roof and all the wetlands is great, I mean, they have a great team for stormwaters, like you said, pretty basic questions, I mean, I'd be open personally to looking at this being administrative if that could be an option, cause, you know, zoning's gonna be zoning in its own element from, you know, stormwater protection, the mitigation, they're, you know, enhancing the stream or lake edge, they're managing all the driveway. I saw that you're taking down one tree?
One tree.
One tree?
Is that the only tree that you're, you think that you're gonna have to remove?
Yeah, yeah, I think so, we're gonna go out again, that tree, we do have a survey, we, the survey does not have trees, so we need to.
If that's the only tree that you're removing.
Yeah.
You don't need a tree survey.
Okay. I will go and verify that.
So, I mean, if you wanna hand select some that are gonna need protections, but other than that, I did see that one tree, I just figured that was maybe one of several, but yeah, no need to, to survey trees that are just gonna remain and not need protections, you know, you can just provide a note.
Okay.
I hear what you say about that, I sort of wish John were here in that quite often lake communities like to know what's going on and if we don't think a public hearing would slow things down at all, it's a good thing to do, but I don't, I, John is sort of our representative from that lake. I, I'm very, I'm just sensitive to lake communities and their, and their desire to know that the, what is going on around the lake. I guess, would you know if this has been discussed with any neighbors, whether that we could get, I don't know.
Janet, I think we should not set a precedent on the lake communities at this point, you know.
Set a precedent, which way?
Of going after a first initial presentation, going straight to administrative.
Okay.
Not that the plan isn't great and, but I, I think that with lake communities, especially under present conditions, that it would be wise to have the public hearing rather than send it straight to administrative.
Do you think we're close enough, could we just schedule one for next month and just?
I think that that would be fine.
I mean, yeah, and we.
I'm finding it, but I'm.
I'm just really sensitive to.
I'd say if there's members of the board that feel that a public hearing is necessary, you should, you should get that going, because I think they're gonna quickly catch up to the, to address the comments, they'll be in a spot where they're.
I mean, and that way, quite often at these hearings, nobody shows up, but at least we've done it and we've satisfied the, and, and people know that something's happening so that then later when we get questions about, what did you do, we said there was a public hearing, so.
Especially since there's gonna be zoning, zoning.
Right, they might have to go to the zoning board. So let's, if, if this makes sense, could you, all right, first of all, I think we all need to agree that, that we wanna have a public hearing? Consensus?
I'm.
You know, yeah.
I drove by today, that's, I could only see it from the, I didn't go knocking on the door, you're actually, the neighboring property was being surveyed, so sale is coming up, I guess, on that. It's a nice plan, I think it's, all things considered, it's quite benign, you're not increasing the house, you know, side, they're modest structures just as you represent it, okay? I do agree with the chairman, chairwoman with Janet that it's, it's better to, to have that step taken, because if there's a time for it to come up, sooner is better than later. And it's, you're gonna go to the ZBA, you clearly have things that you're gonna need some variances for, so, and you, you do wanna get specific. I was reading today in the, in the zoning, when I stopped into the office, there's another setback issue that you might wanna take a look at, and that is that you're supposed to be 50 feet from the center line of the road, so you wanna look at that, make sure that you've cleared that as well, because these things can get turned around on a, on a, you could have an approval basically, but if it, if they're, you're off by an inch, you're off by a mile in a variance, so I would check that, that dimension.
So there's, there's the setback off the property line and then there's a second setback off the center line, usually they kinda end up in the same spot, but.
It's 50 feet off the center line of the road, so, and it's only 20 feet from your property line.
Yeah, 25 feet, so a backyard setback is 25 feet.
I won't interrupt, I won't let you finish your thought, I don't wanna interrupt.
Oh, no, that's it.
So procedurally, as far as the ZBA goes, right, will we need a referral? Sorry, Matt Geronda from BIBO Associates, project engineers. Now that we've established that there will be some ZBA variances necessary, do we need a referral from the planning board to apply to the ZBA?
No, you'll get the determination from Kevin.
Yes.
And then we, that's, that's the predicate to go to the ZBA.
Yeah, and he'll tell you.
And he'll identify exactly what.
Well, we need that decision from the ZBA before the board can vote and before this could proceed to the administrative step.
I think what we've just done is sort of say, let's have a public hearing so, so that people are aware. At the end of that, we have a resolution, typically we look for the ZBA to have made a decision because, because approving something that the ZBA might say no to is not.
Also sometimes if nobody shows up to the public hearing or the public comment is benign, sometimes the board is.
Go on administrative.
Concluded and say, okay, we'll handle this very straight away, we'll report it to the public and then, and then ZBA.
Is a condition.
Is a, you know, you'll get the ZBA before we issue our administrative permit.
Right.
Typically, board doesn't issue permits without the ZBA being in place, it hasn't typically been a condition, but that's one way to get around it, is around it, but to ultimately go to administrative, we hold it.
It's all the ZBA issue.
Yeah, so it doesn't have the calendaring issue.
Exactly, that's kinda what I'm getting at, is.
Yeah, 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 no, I mean, so we're, we're gonna try to, we're gonna try to do that, I think, right, so, but I think if we do have the public hearing, we are clean, you know, and I really don't expect, we have typically not had many comments, but people are at least aware of what is going on in their neighborhood and that's, so to do this, you will need to get to Kirsten, she'll make sure you have the right information to send out, the contact list, put a notice, I'm sorry?
July, probably.
Yep, July.
Good.
Yep, I'm sorry, Bruce, do you want more?
I was just gonna say, on the plan currently, you have plus and minus on, I think for your setbacks, in other words, you've said what it is and then you have plus or minus. You wanna be exact, when you go for a variance, it's been my experience, you.
Let's try seven.
I don't think they do a plus or minus. Maybe, I saw it on one of the plan, I'm trying to think.
I could.
No, there was another plan, maybe it's on, is it on?
Matt, Matt says.
BIBO Associates guys.
Yeah.
Is that a survey, is that, is that taken from a survey?
This is for a proposed structure, so that's 25 feet to the proposed structure.
Okay, but is that, okay, that's to propose?
Yes, yes.
Okay, well, once again, then, if you're right smack on the line, you're good, then you would have that survey.
Yes, absolutely.
For that corner.
Right, yep, that's right, absolutely.
Okay, and then what do you show for the house?
So the house is not changing, that's existing, that's already located right on the line.
Yeah, 24.7 it says here, yeah, right?
Okay.
I might be looking at the wrong one.
You got it on a survey, that's what counts.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we will submit that survey along with our next package.
Right. Okay, so I think, I think we have a path forward, I think the outline here has been pretty good and I think we're, we're doing our best to move this.
Public hearing, July 15th.
Right.
And in terms of resubmission, is it, will it be here till July 8th or?
Yeah, yeah.
When do the notices go out?
That'll be June 29th.
I signed it.
Okay, yeah.
That's a Sunday.
On my count, oh, you're right, look at how that's written, 30th. Is that the notice that I've got, like, I get a notice that somebody's doing something and I have to pick it up at the mailbox, it's like a huge pain.
Becomes certified, yeah.
It is certified, you're right, green card. It's like receipt, you get a receipt, you have to figure out where to, definitely not easy, I thought it was almost scary. It is for them.
Just one thing with the tree removal, if you look at any of the other trees, just looking at possibly maybe adding some trees to the planning plan?
Sure.
Maybe one, just to.
Correct.
Once again, the planning plan is fine, just if you're interested.
Sure.
Great, okay, and what, I'm just, what is the planting, what goes on the green roof in this case, is this all sedum? I didn't look at that.
Yeah, we, we don't actually have a planting plan for the green roof yet, but typically it is sedum, thyme, creepy crawly, succulent type plants, so we can definitely develop that plant list as to what that will be.
Your kind of then is building coverage though, right?
Yes, yes, definitely.
Then it's more like of a, of a water quality measure than, we're still including it in your stormwater counts?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
It's gonna be interesting. So the next item on the agenda is, I just lost my agenda, is a discussion, and that is that there was a Westchester Municipal Planning Federation award.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Actually, there were a number of them, we received, Lewisboro received three planning achievement awards, and one of them was for the comprehensive plan, and I'd like to read in the record as to what the Westchester Municipal Planning Federation said about it. The town of Lewisboro adopted a new comprehensive master plan on August 12, 2024. The critical work was completed with the assistance of a comprehensive plan steering committee comprised of local residents and a professional consulting firm. Their mission was to review and update the town 1985 comprehensive plan in accordance with the vision determined by the town board after an inclusive, thorough, and transparent engagement process with the town residents. The plan communicates the town's vision for development, capital improvements, land preservation, and a government structure and services, and will guide local decision makers for the next generation. I, I think it was important to read it for the record because it was a long time in coming, it took three and a half years to do it, there was an enormous amount of work done by the chairperson and the other people of the steering committees, and especially by our planning chair, who went over every line of it. But that is not to say that the people over here, like Judd and Kristen did, and Judd and Kevin, did work on it, and it was a group endeavor. Now, as Janet likes to say, it takes a town, and it really did, to get the comprehensive plan, and I am very proud to have been a participant in it. Now, as to the distinguished award, distinguished citizen planner award, there's a nomination for Janet, our chairperson, and it, and she got it, and she deserved it, and let me read that into the record. After serving for more than a decade on the Town Conservation Advisory Council, Ms. Anderson joined the town planning board in 2018 and has served as its chair since 2019. She has played an integral part role in the recently adopted update of the town comprehensive plan, and that, I said that. Ms. Anderson is also a member of the Lewisboro Stormwater Committee, Three Lakes Council, New York State Federation of Lake Associations, certified New York State Water System Operator for the Twin Lakes Water Works Inc., is a writer of a number of grants for the town of Lewisboro. I can go into a list of things that she has been involved in and I can provide that to you. And luckily, we've been member, you know, participant in that, but her dedication and depth of knowledge have been invaluable to the town of Lewisboro and I must say, to me, thank you. There was also a distinguished citizen planning, planner award for Katie McGinn, and again, who was actually sort of unbelievable in her control of the situations. She had meetings that just went on for an hour, if that's what time called for, it was always interesting. She had a, the ability to get all that information out and include everybody. We had it in, like, I don't know how many languages all the flyers went out in? She was unbelievable in that, and she was unbelievable in just getting the word out. But this is what one said about her. In 2021, Katie McGinn was selected by the Lewisboro Town Board to chair the town's comprehensive planning steering committee. Under Ms. McGinn's leadership and after three and a half year effort, the committee successfully delivered the town's new comprehensive plan, which was adopted by the town board in August 2024. Ms. McGinn's efforts included managing a complex process within budget, working collaboratively with the town consultants and multiple town stakeholders, and ensuring the process was inclusive and accessible to all. In addition, with the help, with much help from Judd and various members and Janet, of course, we also got some zoning amendments, and I think that is even an oddity to get so much done in a relatively short period of time.
Well, thank you, that's right.
And food was good.
Right, right. Well, that's, that's very kind, I think, so first of all, I'm gonna say I'm really fortunate that Charlene was the delegate from the planning board who joined the comprehensive steering committee, because she brought a tremendous amount of wisdom and leadership really to that group, and also because it meant I didn't have to do it. So, I, I really wanna thank you for that. I think that, and I, and I know a couple people put in letters of recommendations, so I wanna say thank you, it's, but it really is, I, I see this award as an award that really recognizes that the volunteers, I'm, I'm a symbol of the volunteers that are working, cause it isn't me, it's the, it's everybody to get any of this done, so, and I do have to have one correction, I, we, the community sold the waterworks, so I am no longer on that waterworks board, so it's, but that was just recent.
What did you replace it with?
We.
My life, thanks.
We replaced, no, no, what we replaced was the, a management team that was made up of people that had, let's say, gone well past their AARP eligibility date with some, with a professional, with, with professional company, so instead of having. So instead of having volunteers who kind of had to learn about how to manage a water system, there's now a professional group that runs it. So it was, it's, it was a fascinating, that's how I know about water, but it's a fascinating thing, but it is, just to clarify the record, I am no longer associated with the Twin Lakes Waterworks. Okay.
I'll just say, and thank you, Charlene, I, you know, Jan and I were happy to be part of it, I think we kind of played a role, but, you know, the, the real lead on this was the committee and, and the volunteers. And just with regard to Jan, I, the, it's Citizen Planner Award, and I think that's completely appropriate. We just saw tonight that you would spend time with DEC trying to figure out, in a program, like, what qualifies and what doesn't. You just, you bring so much to the board and to the community, so congratulations, really well deserved. The only thing I'm going to say is that if we ever have to do a line-by-line read of the zoning code, I hope they heat that room, because we're in the winter, and it was a little chilly, but all good.
And thanks to Christian, too, for.
Yeah, thanks to Christian.
Doing all those answers.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, no, yeah.
Well, it is, it's a, it's, so, and it's good for the town of Lewisboro to have gotten this, gotten this award. We got, I should say, the town got an award last year for the wilder balder affordable housing, this year for the comprehensive plan, so it's a, it's, it's good recognition for the town and for the, all of the work that, you know, everybody here and all the volunteers do to get this, this thing going, and, and Kirsten, you know, for managing. So we should say she was, she was the administrator, not only for the planning board during this time, but also the steering committee, and, you know, gougads a time. All right, so thank you for making me blush, but anyway, so now we're going on to the, look for a motion to approve the minutes of May 20th, 2025?
Some.
Seconded by Paul. Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next meeting date is July 15th, 2025, and it's going to be here, but we don't know when and if we will be moving to a different.
Location.
Location.
What's the story?
The story is, they are planning to buy that building.
I think they closed on it, no?
What I understood was the financing, that they didn't have a super majority because Tony was away, so they couldn't approve the financing, so they haven't yet closed, so we'll.
I, I don't think we're going to be moving into November.
November?
Mike also has to get some tenants out, I know he's going to, I think he's got to go on, right by Spring Street, he's going to move his offices, so it's going to take a little bit of time, but at least we know we have a home, instead of changing use.
Yeah, and, and.
They've sold, but they're, what's happening?
Okay.
We're buying Michael Sarriano's building to be the new attic.
Offices.
Town hall, or whatever you want to call it at this point in time. On 35? Yeah.
Yeah, the one next to Cameron's?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
They're getting evicted out of here.
Right, they're.
So the school?
The school, the school has said you're out of here by January 1, if not earlier, I, I don't know. So the, my understanding is there is not a courtroom facility or a meeting, big meeting room in this new building, so we are likely to end up in the town hall.
They're still hoping to have, to have another meeting with the town, school, next few days, I believe, see if we can still use this by entering from there, and that will just stay here for a while, but we'll see. Stay tuned. At least if you go to the townhouse, you have Zoom capabilities, right?
Well, you have Zoom capabilities if the town pays for somebody to be there, and that might not be, but we would be able to presumably have a, a screen so that we could, we could look at the plans digitally, and the, it might be easier for anybody coming to see the.
Screens behind the desk, so it's good for the public.
Well, they also have, they usually set up one.
Off to the side.
To the side, so that the board can see it. So, well, to be determined. I mean, I, I would be surprised if the, in my honest opinion, I probably should, let's close the meeting. The next meeting date is July 15th, 2025. I'd look for a motion to adjourn the meeting at 9:06. Bruce moves?
Second.
Seconded by Charlene. Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we have to put this back?